I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Am I loud enough?
Nope.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. There we go, that worked.
That worked.
Yeah, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Let me get my...
Sorry.
Yep. If everyone would please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. So I asked Ms. Jackson just a couple of minutes ago, I think this is the largest gathering that we've had in our new boardroom with students and parents. And some of you might remember when we did all of that right in there and people were lined up down the hall waiting, so this is... We're able to do good news and tonight's gonna be a lot of really great news. Good evening to all the fellow board members. And Rachel, can you hear us? All right. Everybody's had a chance to review the copy of the minutes of the August 1st, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting. If there are no changes or amendments, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Everybody's had a chance to read the copy of the closed session minutes from August 1st, 2022 meeting. If there are any changes or amendments, we'll make those changes in closed session. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Right here, none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. All right, we got through all that regular board stuff, now let's get on to some good news. Mr. Rice.
Good evening. First piece of good news, I want to ask Ms. Jackson to come down and help us with.
Good evening, everybody. It is great to see so many people in here tonight and we're not, like he said, all lined up and crowded in a hot room. So we're very excited to have this, this boardroom and to be able to recognize some amazing students tonight, but as well to recognize one of our staff members and I'd like to ask, ask Mr. Wade Rice Snyder to please come up. And I'd like to tell you about an opportunity that we have for Mr. Rice Snyder, who is now an assistant principal at Pamlico County High School. This is his second year with Pamlico County Schools. And he had, he was nominated by our district to participate in the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association, better known as NC Papa, some of you may have heard of that, to be in our Future Ready Leaders Program, which is a year-long program that really focuses on professional development for our administrators, focuses on those leadership standards. And we're just really excited that he was accepted into that and he gets to do all that work this, this year. And we're just really proud of the things that he has done and is gonna continue to do at the high school this year. So with that, we have a certificate for you and congratulations to Mr. Wade Rice Snyder.
Mr. Rice Snyder. Okay, Pamlico County Schools would like to recognize the following Navy JROTC cadets for outstanding work in their summer leadership activities. First cadets, when I call your name, if you'll just come forward. Cadets Bonnie Frazier and Abby Harwick. These two cadets attended the inaugural Chief of Naval Aviation Summer Academy. This was the first time this opportunity was available for Navy JROTC students. Only 20 cadets out of 300 applicants were selected for this prestigious training. In a particularly noteworthy, is particularly noteworthy that two of the 20 came from Pamlico County High School.
Woo-hoo.
Both students successfully completed the course and we are now proud to call them pilots. Both of these students look forward to starting an aviation career. Congratulations, Cadet Frazier and Cadet Harwick. Bonnie, you can go ahead. What else for, Ms. Harwick? Cadet Harwick. Yeah. Thank you for supporting. Cadet Harwick also attended the prestigious Summer Leadership Experience SEL Camp at the United States Military Academy at West Point. Abby was particularly impressed with the professional instruction and the positive attitudes of the West Point staff and cadets. In her words, she had a fantastic experience and would highly recommend this camp to anyone who may be interested in pursuing a career in the STEM field or an appointment to any of the military academies. Once again, congratulations to Abby. Next, Cadet Ryan Baker. Cadet Baker attended the prestigious Academy Instruction Program AIM at the United States Coast Guard Academy. This is a one-week summer program where the participants are immersed into academy life. Ryan enjoyed the professionalism of the Coast Guard cadets and staff. He really enjoyed the experience and recommends AIM to anyone who may be interested in pursuing a career in the STEM field or an appointment to any of the military academies. Congratulations, Cadet Baker. In addition, Cadet Baker also participated in the North Carolina Tar Heel Boys, Tar Heel Boys State Program. The mission of this program is to teach North Carolina's rising high school seniors the principles of American government through real participation in a model state complete with governing bodies and elected officials. Through hands-on experiences, Ryan was able to learn about the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of franchise citizens. He made new friends and really benefited from the opportunity to learn about the structure of city, county, and state governments. Congratulations, Cadet Baker. Next, Cadets Callan Jackson and Shelby Mary. Daxton Callan. I copied and pasted.
Copy that back.
Cadets Callan and Mary, these two cadets attended the Area 6 Sailing Academy at Moncks Corner in South Carolina in June. Both these cadets are greatly appreciative of the mentorship of Commander Kevin Nash and his team of adult and cadet instructors. Congratulations, Cadet Callan and Cadet Mary. Next, Cadets Neil Landau, Elijah Decunian, Peyton Robinson, Allison Lanning, Bella Goswick, and Diana Harper. These cadets graduated from the Area 6 Leadership Academy at the Citadel in Charleston, South Carolina in June. During this week-long intensive course, the top cadets from the NJROTC units in North and South Carolina learned new leadership skills, both in the field and in the classroom. Each of these cadets became more effective and will immediately apply this knowledge as the senior cadet staff in the NJROTC unit at Pamlico County High School. The cadets started the week with a bit of trepidation, but quickly overcame their fears as each platoon gelled into a close and cohesive unit. They all enjoyed the experience and made new friends with other cadets from Area 6 schools. Congratulations, cadets. And finally, Cadets Sean Richards and Yasmin Ogie attended the Area 6 COEXO Academy, which was also held at the Citadel and ran concurrently with the Area 6 Leadership Academy. This school is designed specifically for those cadets who are expected to serve as the cadets, as the unit's cadet company commander and cadet executive officer. Both cadets quickly became known for their enthusiasm within their platoon. This week concluded with a traditional military dining in. Both cadets returned from the academy confident and eagerly looking forward to another great year for the NJROTC unit. Congratulations, Cadet Richards and Cadet Ogie. As you can see, there are lots of opportunities for leadership activities and even personal growth. I would like to recognize the instructors of our NJROTC program, Pamlico County High School Commander Michael Robinson and Master Chief Dave Matthews. You guys just stand up. At this time, I'd like to call the commanding officer over and speak a few things to you guys, for you guys on their leadership activities they participated in this summer.
Not sure how far away I can get from this thing, but I think everyone, throughout all the programs we had, however diverse, everyone could say thank you to both of our instructors for allowing us to have the opportunity. Cause without having you guys here for many years before us, we wouldn't have built the program up so much to where we could have the opportunity to actually get to this point. And with them, we also have the school system, which has also been working with the unit. So it's just a big thank you. And I think everyone this summer has been able to work hard at their program and they've been able to prosper doing it. And we can definitely see that coming back to the unit this year. So thank both of you instructors and sport.
I would, I would like to ask you, if you'd just say a few words about the experience of getting your pilot's license. I know you didn't want to specifically bring out what you guys did, but I really would like, and Bonnie, you're welcome to speak up too. I just think, I mean, I don't know, she was trying to stay up here. But tell us, just tell us a little bit about that, cause we're incredibly proud of everyone, but if you don't mind.
I think it was an amazing opportunity. Well, me and Bonnie, I think we were both very scared late the first day. Very different because I had never touched an airplane before, other than just the nice cushy seats you get when you get in the very back of the airplane. So it was a big difference being able to actually grip the stick and just yank it. And if it goes up like this, you're like, oh God.
Wow.
So being able to not only improve at flying the plane, but get to learn everything about the physics, weather, everything around it was amazing. I don't know, I could stand here all day to talk about it. I just love it so much.
That's good, thank you. Thank you so much.
That is the end of the good news for this evening. Families and cadets, you're welcome to stay for this exciting meeting that we have planned for this evening. But I'm sure you've got a lot of homework to do, feel free to...
No, don't leave yet. Cause Abby stole some of my thunder. I was gonna say, behind every great program and great students, you got great leaders. And I continually say this all the time, that is one of the absolute best programs that's ever happened to our high school. And after the meeting, we wanna start discussing contract negotiations, lifetime contract negotiations to keep y'all here forever. Yep, outstanding, outstanding. And Abby and Bonnie, I expect to see y'all in F-35s in about 10 years. Well, you can, you can fly the refueling jet that refuels the F-35s. So for two of y'all, have y'all's parents taken y'all to New Bern and let y'all lease the airplane yet? And take, have y'all flown with them?
Not yet.
Not yet? Outstanding, outstanding. But all of you, outstanding, I know y'all, some of y'all went through some really tough stuff this summer, but it's, you'll look back on it in 30 years and say, wow, I'd love to do that again. So enjoy every moment of it. Thank y'all. Y'all can stay if you want to some.
That's such a wonderful...
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't mean to...
See you on the 28th, thank you, sir. See you on the 28th.
He went live.
Congratulations, that's so wonderful and I'm gonna try to be there. Yes, yes, yes.
For a few minutes anyway, so absolutely, it was great. I hadn't seen him in a really, really long time.
That's the whole year?
Oh, yeah.
They did such a good job.
Thank you.
They did such a good job.
Ira, you can come on up and join us. Ms. Carter Wilson, you can come on and join us, y'all can move on to the front.
The room is empty.
It's like Baptist, though.
But it was great that, it was great to have them here tonight, that's, that was outstanding. And I think we'll probably be doing more acknowledgement of good news in the future. So, all right, let's move on. We don't have any public comment tonight, so with that, we're gonna move on to our superintendent's report.
All righty, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start off with our membership report. And if you had a chance to look at that, it looks very different than it has looked in a while. Pamlico Primary School plus 14, Fred Anderson plus 17, middle school minus 21, but that is because we graduated an enormous eighth grade class and a smaller sixth grade class came in. Plus 44 at the high school for an overall of plus 54. So that is great, so we're excited about that, which really gets into my next section, which is about the opening of school. I'm not gonna steal the thunder from the principals, cause they are gonna do principal time in just a little bit, but we had, we've had a great opening. You may have heard, we've had a few transportation things going on. We still have some people trying to get on buses, but we are working through that. But other than that, we've had a great, very smooth opening. And honestly, probably the most, the closest to normal I think we've had in a really long time. I'm not sure we all know exactly what normal is anymore, but it feels good. It feels really good to be in the schools and walking around and just having some normalcy. So one of the, the things that come with all those numbers and that growth is that we actually have opened up, or will be opening up, a new kindergarten and first grade classroom. Our numbers have got large enough that, if you remember, there's the class size mandate now. So we're gonna be, we already are advertising for a kindergarten and a first grade teacher. So we'll be making those changes as soon as we get those teachers in place. So it's a good problem to have. And Ms. Carter Moore is excited about that and is gonna find some good places for them, right? Because we're, we're limited, we really are. So anyway, but anyway, but we had a great opening and again, principals will tell you a little more details. Item 3.3 and item 3.4. We have two different grants that we've applied for recently. One, the school safety grant application. And specifically, what we are requesting is an SRO at every school in our district. We don't know if we'll get that, I'm very hopeful that we might. But at least maybe if we don't get three, we'll get one, or we'll get two. And then we'll figure out exactly how we would divide them up. We know we need more SROs. Most school districts now have one in every single school, as a matter of fact. We're the only one around that doesn't have one in every single school. Hate to say that, but it's the truth. So we are working on that, I feel very confident that we will, we will get something. It's about $360,000, cause it's three employees and the cars and all the equipment that they need. So we should hear something pretty soon. The application was due, I think, what, the 30th or the 31st, Dr. Johnson. Which by the way, Dr. Johnson and, we got that kinda last minute and they jumped on it and were able to get that submitted very quickly, and I appreciate your work on that. So we're hoping to hear something very soon. I was at DPI last week and that was kinda the buzz, that it was gonna be a pretty fast turnaround. So on that note, also, the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund, if you remember, that was the $50 million application we made for a new school that we did not get. We have now applied for it again, there's another round of money coming. And I'm hopeful again, I hate to say, I said that last time, so, but I really do think we've got a very good chance. There was more money that came available and they took our original application and told us not to do a thing to it because we had a very good chance. So we had made some tweaks and we decided to go back to the original since we felt, they felt like it was a good application. So I also was told when I was at DPI, don't take a deep breath, cause you might miss it. That is, that's gonna be pretty fast too. So we're hoping by the next board meeting, we'll have some information on that. Next, item 3.5, the North Carolina School Board Association Conference in Greensboro is November 14th through the 16th. Please let Tiffany know if you're planning to attend that. She has already, get some thumbs up, she's already started reserving rooms and getting people registered for that. We'd love to have everyone go to include our new board members, which if you haven't already received information on that, we'll be getting that to you. So just let her know. Do you have a deadline yet, just as soon as possible right now, soon as possible? Please, check your calendars. All right, we have item 3.6, Cabinet Principal Board of Ed Work Session. That says September the 21st at noon. So you guys already had that when you got the agenda. However, we found some, about four people that would not be able to make that. And so we changed it and then literally as Jeremy hit the button to start this meeting, I found out that's probably not gonna work either. So what our intention is for this, is that once Ms. Davis goes over the data, all the accountability measures, it's a lot, and we wanna take a deep dive into that so that we can really talk about where we were, where we are now, where we wanna be, what we gotta do to get there, and really just dig down. And so we wanna have some time to really sit around the table. We did that a little bit with principals and cabinet last week, as much as we could. So we, we will have that within the next couple of weeks. And I will give you some dates, hopefully tomorrow or the next day that we can get, have, have a time to do that. So, and it'll probably have to be during the day, but I'll try to accommodate everyone. All right, I have nothing for 3.7. And that brings us to live and in person, for the first time in a while, our principals. And I have asked them to be live for principal time this, this month, because I really wanted them to be able to talk about some of the things going on in their schools. So with that, any volunteers to get started? All righty, thank you. We have our high school first.
Good evening, it's nice to see you all again. It was really exciting to see Ms. Dunbar at our football game on Friday. So thank you for coming and cheering on our, our sports and our cheerleaders and our band. So I hope you had a nice time.
We did.
Summer for Pamlico County High School was almost as busy as our regular school year. We had several groups participating in summer camps, from athletics to the arts to academically, academically related things such as summer ventures through the North Carolina School of Science and Math, which I believe you had a wonderful presentation from Leila Prescott at the most, I think it was the most recent board meeting. And obviously, flight school through the United States Navy and many more. We also made several improvements to our building this summer thanks to the support of our central office administration, our maintenance department, and the non-stop work of our custodial staff. So if you are able to see our building, if you haven't yet, it should be much brighter with a new coat of paint. We would love to get a new school, but until then, we certainly wanna make the one we've got more welcoming and inviting for our students and our families. Finally, we were busy hiring new staff throughout the summer and are happy to announce we are fully and wonderfully staffed for the 2022-23 school year. We started off the school year with a wonderful turnout at our Fall Open House and freshman orientation, and we haven't stopped since. We are providing tutoring, enrichment activities, and club opportunities during our Canes Lunch. We are working to build a parent-teacher-student organization to open the lines of communication and collaboration between our teachers, our parents, and the community while allowing our students to also have a voice. In fact, we just had our second meeting this afternoon, right before this one, and participation is already growing. We had two more people, so every little bit we're excited about. Fall sports are in session and all our games are posted to the athletics calendar, so we would love to have you join us. With that said, homecoming week is fast approaching, it's very early this year. We will celebrate the week of September 26th through the 30th with our homecoming football game at 7:00 PM that Friday evening. Academically, we have many new procedures and practices in place to improve student performance. We are bringing back goal teams, data trackers, and our EOC courses. We are implementing the On to College ACT Preparatory Program for our juniors, and the list goes on. We are really eyeing that B or higher on our next School Performance Report card. We have also developed our Canes Family Values and are working to build our school-wide PBIS Behavior Expectations Matrix and are looking forward to celebrating our students and staff more frequently this school year. As I've mentioned to our staff, students, and our parents, we accomplished a lot of good last school year, but for 2223... last school year, but for twenty-two, twenty-three, we are set to go from good to great together.
Thank you very much. I'll take another volunteer. We'll just go in order, then.
A little bit taller than Mrs. Holton. Okay, I'm just gonna lean over a little bit. Good evening, board members, and Ms. Jackson. Um, so I actually want to start by sharing a little bit with you guys about the work that our staff is going to be doing this year to meet the needs of our students. So we have started to really dig into the research around adolescents and the development of the middle school child. If you have a middle schooler, or if you've had a middle schooler, or if you've worked in a middle school, you know it is not for the faint of heart. So we're gonna be focusing on the domains of development and really honing in on what the implications are for us as the educators. So one of the things that we recognize is the need to provide our kids with some additional opportunities during school and after school to explore some of their interests. So we're excited that we've added four new electives, um, which are art, chorus, nutrition and wellness, and animal science, all of which I believe are going very, very well so far. Um, additionally, we've added a few extracurricular activities, or we're going to be adding, um, FFA. We're trying to get up and running, um, FCA, we're starting this Thursday. We are going to restart Beta Club. We previously had Beta Club, and it kinda fell by the wayside during COVID, so we're gonna restart that. And we are starting a new, um, venture, which is the Principal Student Advisory Council, and we've had a lot of student applications, which I'm very excited about. I'd also like to share with you that we are working to revise our mission and our vision statements. If you go to our school website, you can see that there is a widget posted, that will share a little bit of information with you about the work that we've already done, and it will allow you to provide us with some feedback, so I really encourage you to do that. Some upcoming dates. Fall Open House and Title One Night, we do have scheduled for October fourth. Homecoming Week is also that week, the week of October third through seventh, with our homecoming game being on October fifth. It's gonna be a very busy week, it's a very exciting week, though. We have several volleyball and football games between now and homecoming, um, and we are hoping to win some more championships again this year, some conference championships. And then we also have a band competition scheduled for September twenty-fourth at West Craven, and I really hope to see some faces out there. Thank you so much, we're excited for a good year.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, it is great to be back in person. We are off to a really, really awesome start at FAA. It does feel normal, like Ms. Jackson said. The kids have really settled in seamlessly, like, they've been doing this for years, when in reality, they really haven't. I have settled in after being away for three months, really seamlessly, like I never left. So, we're just rocking and rolling, and it's looking to be a really, really great year. So our first two weeks have been spent really reteaching our rules, expectations, revisiting our PBIS matrix at Anderson, we say we shine. Um, and just teaching our fourth graders and reteaching our fifth graders about what that looks like all across our school, whether they're on the playground, in the classroom, on the bus, just being really consistent with those expectations, so that, that will carry through for the, the rest of the year. Um, our teachers are continuing to work really hard on all sorts of professional development, mostly letters, which is our science of reading, PD, that's K-five, so that's the same in the primary school as well. This afternoon, we participated in professional development with EdMentum, which is our online learning platform, as well as diagnostic testing. And then next month, we have PD for InVision Math, which is our new K-five math curriculum. So our teachers are learning a lot, as well as our students right now, but they're all really excited and eager to be doing that work. Our PTO is super active this year. We are in the works for a playground refresh. Don't worry, Mr. Curtis, it's, it's nothing crazy. But they are trying to get a new Gaga Bowl Pit added to our playground, as well as we're hoping to refresh our blacktop, add some four-square, um, grid lines and regulation basketball lines on our blacktops. Our PTO is working hard on that project. We are going to begin Girls on the Run, Battle of the Books, Odyssey of the Mind, as well as Gentlemen of Excellence soon. So those are kind of all of our elementary extracurriculars, that they'll be up and going within the next month. And then our Fall Title One Night will be on October sixth, that's a Thursday, at six o'clock. Our book fair will also be open, we'll be providing hot dogs for all of our families, and our PTO will be fundraising that night, selling other concessions. Our outdoor movie was a huge success last year, so we're gonna continue with that. We have a new movie this year, it's another fall-themed movie, but we're watching a Toy Story fall-themed movie, which I've never seen, but that's kind of a big hit with the third Toy Story out now. So, the kids are excited, we're excited, and come by and see us anytime, we would love to have you. Ms. Dunbar came to our open house, and it was great to see her there, so thank you all.
Thank you. Last but certainly not least, Ms. Carter Moore.
Good evening, everybody, how are you?
Good evening.
Well, we've had many great things at the primary school as well. First and foremost, we are excited, or was excited, to, um, have our new assistant principal, Ms. Kristy Haslett. As Savannah mentioned, our, um, orientation line was fantastic. Almost all of the classrooms had, um, a hundred percent attendance, which is outstanding. We had our students and our families engaged in our scavenger hunt, and it was a blast for all. At the primary school, we have also introduced our PBIS matrix. And what that is, is a positive behavior intervention support. We are trying to create little leaders at our school, and in order to do that, they must know the rules, be a part of the setting, and these are some of the things that we're working toward at the primary school. We have several teacher assistants to step into new lead teacher roles at the primary school. We are very proud of them, and we support them fully. We have welcomed back quite a few teachers, um, that left the district and now have returned, so we are ecstatic about that. Enrollment is up, as Ms. Jackson has mentioned. Seems like we're bursting at the seams, but like she said, it's a good problem to have. We are still celebrated and extremely proud of our EOG math scores from last year. Our third grade team, our students did a phenomenal da- job, and we are trying to capture that and hold on to that steam and move forward into the new year. We are proud to introduce our new mission and vision statement. We work very hard, and at the primary school, all belong, all achieve, all lead. Our school creates pathways for all learners to achieve educational and personal goals, develop leadership skills required to make effective decisions, and are champions of our own successes. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Are they all great, or what? Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it. So, you can tell why it's been a great start to the year, because they're excited, they work really hard all day long, and they're here with all this passion and excitement. And I just appreciate those of you that are able to go out and support the things that they do, because they all work really hard, and all the other folks sitting around them as well. So that is all I have. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Always ask the board if there's any comments from the board at this time?
In my fifty-six, I don't know, fifty-plus years, I've never been more impressed with a group of principals and the presentations they make. Yeah, that, we haven't heard from them in a while, but it was, it was just, it just made me feel good. So I think we're going in the right direction.
I would also like to say, um, I'm so excited about the new year. It seems like everything is really going great. The, the schools all look so amazing. I went to the open houses, and the schools looked great. All the teachers had a smile on their faces, it was so wonderful. And the students and the parents seemed excited. I felt so excited myself, it almost made me want to come back to work.
We have an opening.
Hey, hey. He's a former East City teacher, remember that?
Kindergarten and first grade.
A new kindergarten teacher?
What'd you say?
New kindergarten teacher, first grade?
No, not kindergarten.
Your old job's available, your old job is available.
I, I would just like to say thank you, though. I know you've worked so hard, everybody, and it shows, and I am so impressed and excited about the year.
I too want to echo off what Ms. Dunbar said. Just looking at Facebook and seeing all the little happy faces, and them being able to come back together and enjoy each other's, and the teachers were so welcoming, so I too thank you. And this will be, I speak that into existence, this will be your best year ever. Amen. You have some challenges, but we got room. That's why Hurricane does.
There you go.
Any other board members? All right. And again, thank y'all. It is, the welcome back celebration, I think that just kinda set the stage, and everybody was excited and happy. So, expecting great things, and as I said before, when you got great leaders and, and great staff, great students, great things will happen, so. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda. We have three, uh, field trips on there. If we need to vote on any of those individually, we can pull it out. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Y'all gotta be fast to beat Jean of the Senate.
All right, moving on to, uh, Agenda Item Five, Instruction. And Ms. Betty Davis.
While she's coming up, I have a handout, but I'm, I know how the children are, so I feel like we're gonna be just like children. I'm gonna give this to you when she's done talking, just so that y'all can listen and hear what she has to say, and then you can take this with you. But it'll give you something to look at, um, later, as you ponder some of these things that she's gonna talk about. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
First up, I'd like to, well, good evening. Um, I'd like to present two contracts that we weren't able to get on the last board meeting for approval. The first is Kate Acoc for School Psychologist ser- Contract Services. And the second is for Voices Together, a music therapy program for students in our adaptive classrooms and our EC pre-k classroom.
Any questions on these? We do have to approve these, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Next up, I'm going into my discussion, my accountability. For the prior school year. I'll begin with our Read to Achieve data. This data is for students in grades one through three. For school year twenty-one, twenty-two, students in grade one showing reading grade level proficiency was at fifty-three point six percent. This is up from twenty-eight point four percent for school year twenty-twenty-one. For students in grade two, from school year twenty-one, twenty-two, demonstrating grade level reading proficiency was sixty-two point three percent, which is up from forty-four point three percent last year. This information is already on our district website, because it had to be put on the website by September first. The accountability data was released for our end-of-the-year data for EOGs and EOCs. Like last year, districts have been cautioned to view EOI results in context as data is only valuable when given in context. This data is in comparison to what the state describes as a normal school year in eighteen-nineteen to do, to two very abnormal school years, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. While the state considers eighteen-nineteen to be normal, we know that for us, we were going through Hurricane Florence. Once this data was released, testing and accountability, along with the curriculum and instruction, reviewed the data and made some at-a-glance comparisons that Ms. Jackson will be giving to you all. Information was then shared with the Jackson and the cabinet and principals. Here are some areas where PCS ranked above the state, the region, and some of the surrounding counties. We chose Beaufort County, Craven County, and Jones County, because we get chil- children from those counties, and Jones is a similar size. Areas where we were above in all those areas were keys, math one, our cohort graduation rate, seventh grade math, fourth grade reading, fifth grade science, and third grade math. Areas where we fell below the region, the state, and some or all of the surrounding counties were English two, math three, ACT, middle school reading, and fourth and fifth grade math. We've given you copies, or we'll be giving you copies of this information, along with comparisons to the region and surrounding counties. For many of the areas where we fell short, working with Ms. Dixon and curriculum and instruction, we've already put some measures in place to address our student needs. At our upcoming work session, we'll take a deeper look at this data, and we look forward to working with you in doing so.
I would encourage all board members, I spent about three hours this morning breaking down test scores. And I would encourage you to go online and start looking at test scores, not just ours, but look at surrounding counties with similar demographics. It's enlightening. And, just as a word of, I don't know, word of caution, the, this SDPI website is not user-friendly. They present a ton of information, but it's, you wear your computer out trying to refresh and find it. If you want a good analysis of test scores, a summary, go to the News Observers website and look at their article where they list all the test scores. I found it much more user-friendly than the state's. I almost think the state's trying to confuse us with some of the information they're presenting. There's a lot of things we don't understand, like, we don't understand how growth is determined. I keep asking, but nobody really knows. Apparently, there's some formula that the state has that nobody really understands. I'm not even sure the people there understand it. And so I would strongly encourage you to come to that work session that Lisa's gonna hold sometime within the next week or so. But before you come, be prepared. Look at test scores, break it down, and there's a wealth of data. Just something, I looked at Craven County scores, I spent a lot of time with them. And then I began to realize that there are patterns there. For example, I think it's sixty-two or sixty-four percent of military-connected kids are on grade level. That's pretty high, as things go right now. Look at the test scores in Craven County, once you go into James City and cross over into that other area, and then compare them to the rest of Craven County. It's not looking at Craven County, but it give you an idea of how test scores are determined, because they have a larger sampling of students than we do, so you can see a lot of patterns emerge there. I just, I found it really enlightening, and I just hope all of board members, before we have that work session, will look at this and be prepared, so you can ask, so you can ask good questions. But nobody seems to understand how growth is determined. I, I, I've looked for every bit of research I can find, I can't find anybody that understands it. There apparently is some formula, uh, mathematical formula, but nobody really understands it.
Ms. Dixon and Ms. Davis spent a lot of time on these charts that I've passed out to you that actually do compare us to those counties that she mentioned, as well as state and the region as a whole. It kinda gives you a better idea than looking at it all in isolation. So, you know, we'll, we'll be happy to answer your questions. As you start looking at this, if you have questions, you can give us a call. But saving it for that work session probably would be a really good idea, too, so that we can really go through and dive, dive into it.
Before, because we're consolidated, all of our schools are consolidated in this area, we don't have geographic areas that you can look at. Craven is a great example, and Beaufort County, too. You can go in and look at theirs, and you can see the impact and how kids in certain parts of the county score. Keep in mind that economically disadvantaged children average thirty-five percent proficiency level, as opposed to those military-connected kids who average sixty-four percent. But I just encourage you to look at all of it, it's really interesting.
Did you wanna make a point, or are you good?
I just wanted to just reiterate what Ms. Davis said about taking it in context. We know that when we come into this work session, we're gonna be able to dig really deep into looking at each individual, you know, being so small, we're gonna be able to pinpoint a lot of things that we already have. And, and again, just thinking about things in terms of the measures that the state provides. So, for example, you're talking about the growth, the growth measure, and that magic formula that everyone hears about, that no one seems to be able to, to figure out.
I don't believe anybody can answer the question about it.
I haven't gotten an answer in all the times that I've asked, and then I got an answer that it's been adjusted because of COVID, they reworked the formula based on the data that they were getting in the year that was skipped, so to speak, for testing. But also, there are things to keep in mind, like, the state continued to move the park. But also, there are things to keep in mind, like the state continued to move the mark even while we were going through COVID. So things like the ACT, we're measuring that now against a new number, a new cutoff of 18, whereas throughout COVID, we were. So in the midst of everything, the state continued to move the mark. And we know that we have to continue to move towards that as well. We have to promote proficiency. But I'm really looking forward to the work session. I hope as many of you as possible keep on, not just to bring questions, but also to bring ideas and suggestions for what we can do to really dig into the data. But we do have a lot to celebrate in the midst of the last three years. I'm really proud of our.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
All right. So everybody be checking your emails in the next few days as we try to lock in a date for this work session. And thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, moving on to finance.
Good evening. The first item I want to discuss is Item 6.1, and that is an interim budget resolution for August and September. I'm going to ask Tiffany if she will help me. All right, you have two interim budget resolutions there. One is for August, one is for September. And the intent will be at the October 1 board meeting, I'll present the board with the uniform budget for the entire fiscal year, now that we have the initial allotments and all the information on raises and benefit increases. So this just allows us to continue paying bills until we get that uniform budget approved in October.
Any questions on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Item 6.2 is the Child Nutrition Bid Awards. And Ms. Laura Mancinas asked me to present this tonight. I think most of y'all know Pamlico County Schools' Child Nutrition Department is part of a, is part of a coalition. It's called the Coastal Coalition. It is Pamlico, Carteret, Craven, Lador, and Jones County. Those five Child Nutrition Departments go together for bids in hopes of getting better pricing than if we just did it on our own. And that sheet there shows there's five different lots. One is for food, second one is for supplies, the third one, produce, fourth one, ice cream, and the last one is milk. The ones that were bid on is lots one for the food and lots three for supplies. The other three are, this is the second year of a five-year contract, so for the produce, RNH will continue to provide those services. Hershey will provide the ice cream, and Mayola will provide the milk products. The good thing about that is the prices can't change when we're right in the middle of this five-year deal. Not quite the case with the Lot 1 and Lot 3, Lot for food and supplies. Cisco is the, was the only bid we received for both food and supplies. And you see for the food, it is $2,408,604. And again, that's for all five school district Child Nutrition Departments. And for supplies, it is $337,546.98. As you can imagine, that's an increase over this past year that we just finished. The food is an increase of about 21%, and the supplies is an increase of about 18%. We knew that was coming. So it'll be a challenging year for Child Nutrition, but they have certainly done well here the last couple of years. And I anticipate that we will still be able to look good. And Ms. Mancinas and her staff, they do a great job. So we just need to have this approved. This came in right after the August board meeting, so that's why we didn't have it to you any earlier. So we need to go ahead and get this approved, so we can move on with these contracts. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hands.
Thank you. One more handout. I just wanted to prove to you that I'm still a numbers guy. You see the numbers. A lot of, a lot of figures up there. A program report code, PRC, for supplemental funds for certified teachers and certified instructional support personnel. And this is supposed to be a recurring amount of money that will be coming every year. This, they don't want us to call it a bonus or a, they don't, they don't want us to call it a bonus. And it can't supplant any local supplements that we give. So we can't take this money and use it for the 11% or the 15%. So this will be in addition to the local teacher supplement that the certified teachers and certified instructional support personnel will receive in November and in May of next year. I had, I had a meeting with Ms. Jackson. We talked, we talked about this. It's really up to the board of each local board of education how this money is distributed. We received a little over $423,000 to spend. And if you look down at the bottom there, that is $320,000. That's about $103,000 less, because $103,000 are matching benefits that we have to pay. It's the employers matching social security and the employers matching retirement. And this, these funds are subject to retirement. I went back and looked, really, I went back five years and looked at the increase in the teacher pay scales to just see who was getting the highest percentage. Well, it didn't take long to figure out the way it's been working. The younger teachers, beginning teachers are, have been getting the highest increases in pay, and those salaries have been adjusted more than the ones, the further you go up, you go in the length of term of a certified teacher, the less the raise is. And what I did is on this first, on the first column, I took the increase, percentage increase in pay from last year. So if you look at, at the very first one, any teacher that is 26 or more years, and that's it, it doesn't go up after that, it's just 26 years and up. So if you're, if you're a 26-year teacher or a 35-year teacher, you're making the same amount of money. But they, they, their average increase was 2.51%. And then you've got a, you've got a group of 20 to 25, and also 16 to 19, and you can see those increases. They start going up a little bit the less years of experience that a teacher has. But look at the number of, of teachers that we have that are 16 years and up. That's a lot, that's a lot of teachers. And so that, to me, that's a, that's a good thing. And then, of course, as you go down, you can see how the percentage in, in pay increased as you go down, to the point where somebody, a teacher, a beginning teacher last year, and a, and a teacher with one year of this year, their raise was 7.16% down at the very bottom. So the thought we had was, these experienced, the long-term teachers that aren't getting much of a raise, in the past five years, their average raise has been 1%. The average raise for a beginning teacher has been 4%. So it's obvious where they're focusing on, and I don't blame the state for that, that's just the way it is. But I think this would be a good way to utilize this money to reward these people. I mean, even at the very bottom, $2,000 supplement is not bad in addition to the local supplement they will, they will be receiving. That 3,000, up at the top, that $3,379, that's the maximum that we can pay. So we just went and just kind of split it up the best we could, tried to make the numbers match down at the bottom. And we just need the blessings of the board to move forward with this. I don't know that this is something we'll be able to get done in September, but if not, definitely October. And then we'll turn around again in November and do the local teacher supplement, you know, like we always do in November and May of the next year.
What's the top pay for a max teacher?
For what?
What is the top, according to the pay scale, what is the top pay? What is their top?
The bachelor's, I think, is $5,200.
$52,000.
I mean, per year.
For $52,000. Then that would be $52,000.
Yeah, it'd be $52,000.
$52,000 per year. So this would be in addition to that.
Yes, sir.
So with the local supplement.
Yes.
They're going to pull, we may have some go over $60,000 this year for the first time.
Absolutely.
That's, that's interesting. It should be about 10 more thousand above that, but I don't expect the legislature to ever do that. Teachers are just so poorly paid. Any other profession, they go in, they can make more money. I just, it just irritates dick inside of me.
Yeah, the top end of the bachelor's pay, I'm sorry, is $54,000, not $52, $54.
$54. So they can pull about $54, $57, $63, $64,000.
Easily.
Okay.
Yep. We, they had, the state had this last year. It kind of came late. It's very late in the school year. As a matter of fact, we did it in, we did it in May. And based on the amount of money we received last year, I think we just did a flat, divided it by the number of certified people, and it was like $1,980 for everybody. So in this scenario, we've obviously got more money this year, 2,000 is the minimum.
But based on looking at the distribution of these funds by county?
Yes, and that is in your handout. There's three pages that shows what every LAA received.
Why, why some of those shows these, rather?
Depending on their tax base and what kind of, I guess, what kind of per pupil expenditures they have, they, they didn't receive money. And I think that's probably Wake, Charlotte, Mecklenburg, and Guilford, maybe.
Yep.
Just the big ones.
That are already paying 20-plus percent.
Durham County, Guilford County, Mecklenburg County, and probably Wake County, yep, that's sure.
Need a motion. Yes, sir.
Yep.
So, excuse me. So, so the percent increase, you just came up with that after you figured it. You, you started at the bottom with 2,000 and then worked your way up each category. Is that how you figured the percent increase?
Well.
That was already there, that percent.
But the 2,000 wasn't there. The $33.79 was there. So that's really where I started, then I worked my way down. I wanted to try to stay at 2,000 for a minimum, if I could. And just based on the way the numbers fell out, you know, I was able to do that.
Oh, the $33.79, that was the maximum?
That's the maximum that we can pay.
And so then you just went down from there, I see, based on the number of employees?
Well, the percentages from the increase last year, the increase in pay, and like he was saying, you can see that, the company teachers we have in those top three categories, and that was the smallest increase. So that's why we wanted it to be kind of flipped around and give them a larger supplement.
I think this is very good.
And my guess would be with all these brand-new teachers we have, a $2,000 supplement that they weren't expecting will be very nice.
I think this is good.
What's the entry level salary now, state, regular state salary?
37.
37?
Mm-hmm.
So 37 plus this, 39 plus the local supplement?
Yeah, that'll put them probably 45, 46.
But you know, it does, still doesn't seem right for a teacher's been teaching 20-some years that they're only making $15,000 more than somebody just starting out.
It's absurd.
They all should be hired, don't get me wrong. But it's just.
Well, it's cra, it's, to me, it's crazy that a teacher that's been, works 26 years, then all that, they know that from that point on, the only increase they'll get will be whatever, whatever, if the state even gives a raise at all, because they're not getting bumped. I mean, they're getting bumped a year of experience, but they're still in the same.
Run.
Yeah, so they're not getting bumped down, where a teacher going from a zero to a one, they're not only getting the raise the state puts in, but they're going from a zero to a one and taking advantage of that bump.
The idea behind giving them more has been that we can't get them to teach now, so.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
So we give them more to get them to come into the profession.
But they need to also concentrate on the experience teachers do.
That's right. I agree. I think this is good.
I agree.
Can you get it to them this month? It's gonna be tough.
We're gonna try.
Want a motion?
Yep. Yeah, we need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Thank you.
Helen, were you, did you approve?
Yes.
Okay.
See, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a question? I had someone to approach me and ask me, so for better understanding, the supplement, I, I remember we approved something, and I do apologize as far as how the, we were dispersing the 10-month employees.
So our local supplement is going to be 11%. And then the hard-to-fill positions, which is math and EC, correct, will be 15%. And then this will be on top of that. This is a totally separate supplement that they're going to get now.
So I'm totally different. I'm trying, trying to explain. Get out. It's the way that, there was a concern as far as the 10-month employees, how their, their monies are dispersed because of the benefits that they, they come out. You're talking about.
Is your question is probably, we used to be able to, they used to, could take a 10-month salary and put it over 12 months. And then it was, two or three years ago, something, the state did something. So now, it's only 10 months. They can't, they can't put it into a 12-month payment plan.
Yeah, we started that last year where all 10-month employees, that most of them were getting 12 checks to help them through the summer months, because they normally get paid August through May. And they, and they, back then, they were getting also a check in, in June and July. Last year, and the state took that away. So last year was the first year we did 10 checks for 10-month employees, August through May. Now, what you may be referring to is this year, we've started a different plan with some of the non-certified people that were being paid in advance like certified teachers were. Child nutrition is, child nutrition are the main ones right now that we're gonna, that we're starting with. In other words, when teachers came back in mid-August and they get paid at the end of August, they're getting a whole full month's pay. So they're getting paid through, they're getting prepaid through the middle of September. And we had always just continued to do that with all, even non-certified people. And so now, what we're trying to do this year is gradually change that, where it's kind of hard to prepay a child nutrition employee when they, their hours vary and change. So that's one thing that we did this year. Instead of them getting paid August through May, we're going to now pay them September through June. And what we did is we gave them the opportunity to get an upfront loan, so to speak, from the district in August if they needed it. And then we would take that back for 10 months, take 10% of it back the next 10 months. So, and most of them took it, a couple didn't. They said they didn't need to, need to do that. But we're, we're trying to get away from non-certified people being prepaid. And that's, this is the first step in doing, in doing that. And I don't know if that's, if you spoke to a child nutrition employee or not, but that's, that's the main change that we've done so far this year. We're trying to get away from paper time sheets and get them to start using a, a program called Timekeeper, where they go into a computer and just log in every morning and log out in the afternoons. That really helps with teacher assistants that are bus drivers. That really helps with teacher assistants that are bus drivers, because that time sheet's kind of messy. Teacher assistants that are bus drivers get prepaid for their main job, for their teacher assistant job, and they get paid in arrears for their bus job. So it's, it's been kind of messy over the years, and we're just trying to, trying to make some changes to fix that. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item seven, our COVID-19 protocols. I think we can do this pretty quick, unless somebody wants to change from our mask optional. Need a motion to approve that we continue with our COVID-19 protocols as we have been doing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Seven point two, Dr. Johnson.
Federal grant programs are in full swing, have been in full swing, and they just, they don't stop, particularly since I've, I've kind of come into this role, the number of grant applications that we've, we are applying for and managing are more than double, triple than in past years, and that's all a very good thing. What we're doing tonight, I just want to let you know kind of where we stand on that, we're, we have submitted our ESAR applications, and they've all been approved. What we had to do, and Ms. Metter did the heavy lift in writing the grant, we had to update the grants and resubmit, particularly those that carry over, over the course of years, we've done that. What I'm really focusing on tonight and telling you is what we do is our annual application for our Title I, Title II, and Title IV grants. We've been meeting about this for a number of months, we've met with our stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, school-based administrators, asked them to complete a needs assessment based on what they need in their school, but basically, the goals that we have for these applications haven't changed too much over the course of time, where we're putting a heavy emphasis on letting those funds pay for human resources, teacher salaries that will lower the class size and lower the student to teacher ratio. That, that's, that's in essence Title I, Title I pays for that and professional development. Our allotment this year for Title I was $499,978. Title II is all about teacher support and, and professional development. We really use our Title II funds to finance our beginning teacher support program and salary of our coordinator. That's, that's something, you know, that we look at our needs, we have a, I think there's, according to that chart, there were sixteen brand-new teachers, and so we really have a, a good plan in place, supporting those teachers and making sure that they have what they need to do their job, teaching the hard, hard job, and being able to support our beginning teachers, not just the BT I, but on through BT II, BT III, right on up through when they get, until they get a continuing license, we want to continue to support them and give them that extra help they need, and those funds are going for that. Title IV funds have to be spent in, in three different ways, we spend those funds on a well-rounded student, we have to spend at least 20% of our funds on that, 20% of our funds have to be spent on safe and healthy students, and then we can spend a portion on providing techno, technology training for student, for teachers and how, how they can best use technology. So the Title II allotment was $71,962 this year, Title IV allotment was $33,041 this year. That application is complete, we will be submitting it this week after we make this presentation to you all. I do want to also let you know that Pamlico Christian Academy has decided to exercise their right to participate in the proportionate share in the, we, we basically, it's a proportion of the number of students who are domiciled in Pamlico County that would be attending some of our schools, but they are opting to go there, but they are entitled to a portion of that money, and so that money is going to the Christian Academy, Title I funds, around $53,000, Title II funds, around $17,000, and Title IV, around $11,000. I met with representatives of the Christian School this past Thursday, and just, that was, we had met earlier in the, in the summer, but just kind of finalizing things, they have to submit a needs assessment, it's like us, last year, the funds were used for technology for them, and this year, we're actually looking at a human resource type need they have as far as, you know, a tutor or something like that. So anyway, just to, just to bring you up to speed on that, this is not really something necessarily for approval, but we want to make sure you are aware of everything we're doing with our federal grants. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions?
All right, well, I appreciate your time. Thank you, y'all have a good evening.
Seven point three, Ms. Jackson and...
I'm gonna turn it over to him.
And Dr. Patrick.
As you know, last month, you adopted a series of new policies, and I, and I do need to
apologize, because this came to me after the fact, but going forward, the night that you approved it or adopt the new policies, we'll also have in place for you to take action to remove or kind of nullify your old policies and archive them, so we'll kind of take a one swoop at that. So tonight, there's a list of thirteen policies that you're basically going to need to remove, and they'll be archived as they are replaced with new policies. If I can go ahead and jump on seven point four, some of the local information changed down on the very bottom of that policy, policy 1510, you'll see that the words building and grounds, management, safety were struck from the policy and replaced with emergency drills, so it's just a very minor change there, that change was made by the School Board Association. Do you have any questions regarding these two items?
Any questions on these? Yep, so we need a motion, our first motion, we need to...
Motion.
For removing the policies presented and archiving those, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, now we need a motion to adopt policy 1510, 427270 as presented, and this is for first reading, correct?
Motion.
Oh, hold on a second.
Actually, with the change being so minor, you can still invoke your policy to approve it on first reading.
Okay, so if there's no question, so we'll have to do a, a motion first to not have a second reading, and then we'll do the motion to approve, so if everyone is okay without a...
Is that right, Rachel? She looks like she wants to say something.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
I thought she was asleep. I bet she may be muted.
Are you muted?
Let's try, let's try again.
Say something again.
Oh, no.
So thumbs up if what I said was correct? Our first motion will be to waive our second reading?
Okay, got it.
All right, so I need a motion to waive our second reading policy.
Motion. Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, now we need a motion to approve 1510, 427270 as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hands. All right, thank you, Rachel.
I thought she was asleep.
All right, seven point five.
Voting delegate?
So we've got to do, I think last year, I delegated, so who is planning to go to the School Board Association Conference? I think they will be planning, Jean?
Yeah.
Helen, Mr. McCotter? Mr. McCotter's going, Helen, do you know yet? Yep.
You gonna make the last hurrah?
You can still go, you can still go, y'all can still go.
I think, I think our new board members need to go.
But they can go too, we've already invited them.
Well, it just seems like I should...
Judy, we could go and get our pen supply.
We could do that.
All right, so I need, let's see, I need three to serve as our voting delegates, and then I need one to serve as an alternate. So Jean will do one.
Helen, two.
Helen, are you the second one?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. McCotter, Ms. Dunbar, Mr. McCotter, all right, he's our third one. Ms. Dunbar will be our alternate. Y'all got that? Let's see, and we don't have to approve anything on that. All right. So you've got a head count now of which ones are going, so they're, they are committed. All right, seven point six, Ms. Jackson.
So when we did not receive the grant for the new building, we kind of tabled the applications for, I'm gonna pass this out to you, for the construction management company, which we only had one application, we did a request, pass that down, please, request for, it's not proposals anymore, it's requests for quotes, RFQs. So this was actually the company that, in talking with our architects, Robbie Ferris and that group, and Dr. Bracy, that they did recommend we work with, so we were glad they applied, they are the only ones that made an application. In the meantime, we did not get the grant, so we kind of put a hold on that. Because we are gonna hope that we are moving forward, we just need approval for this to be our construction management company if and when we get the money and we start building a brand-new six-twelve school.
How is this playing with that architect that we did, was he still involved?
Yep, he's still involved.
Okay.
And still lobbying with the folks that are holding the purse strings.
Motion.
All right, we have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
All right, and hopefully, we will be able to...
Get some good news.
Use our services.
And if you want, there's a whole, you just got the top page, there's a book, and you are welcome to come by here, and we've got several of them, you can take a look.
All right, we are at seven point seven, Mr. Dudley.
I moved at the Pamlico County Board of Education, entering to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and GS 115C-402, confidential personnel matters as provided in NC GS 143-318.11A1 5 and 6 and 115C-319, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve your attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right, we have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we're in closed session, we'll say seven fifty-two. Alright, we're in closed session, we'll say 7:52.
Motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed session.
Motion.
All in favor raise your right hand. And I need a motion to approve the out of district students as presented in closed session.
Motion.
Second. All in favor raise your right hand. Uh, let's see, you can review your meeting dates, training and board events. Um, is the school board association gonna do like their district meetings like they used to do? Or we not heard anything?
I, have you gotten anything about, it's usually somewhere in the region. I saw something, I saw something.
Yeah. It was somewhere.
That would be else in Wilson now.
That's it, there were three, there were three, one of them was in like Asheville, one of them was in.
But they're not doing it regionally now this year. Uh.
Well.
Was it Wilson September 21st?
Next week. No, yeah, that's next week.
Yes, next week, so.
The district.
The district board meeting, we always go to that. We, I mean, posted it like three years ago, four years ago. Not to say we haven't had it.
They tried to do it online, I think.
Are we all?
If the door locks at them.
All right, uh, so review the dates. Everybody knows what they are. I think Tiffany knows who's going to the conference in Greensboro. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor raise your right hand. And we are adjourned, thank you. Thank you, Rachel.